Oh, I don't, yeah, I think we did. Commissioner Sekan, you can hear us correct?
Yes, I, hold on, yes, I can hear. Can I hear you guys? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Is Commissioner Singh on the Zoom call? Okay. Okay, so, uh, let's go ahead and get started. I have a statement for public hearings. During the public hearing, I'm going to first ask the staff for their comments or reports on the items being discussed. After the staff's presentation, then I will open up the hearing to public testimony. I will then close the public hearing, at which time no member of the public shall address the commission, unless specifically asked by a member of the commission through the chair. The planning commission will then discuss the matter amongst themselves and take action on the item being considered. If we've had public testimony for more than thirty to forty-five minutes, chairman can state the following. We have heard public testimony in opposition, can we open the public testimony to support of the project? Can also add the following, if there's any further public testimony on the matters or concerns that have yet to be heard, we can then move on to, uh, our discussions. Calling to order the May twenty-fourth Planning Commission meeting. Uh, let's see, do we have somebody who will be taking role? Okay.
Lupe, can you take role, please?
Apologizing.
Sorry about that. Uh, we have Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Wadis?
Can I turn on your microphone, please?
Uh, Commissioner Wadis, can you please turn on your microphone?
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Sandu?
Here.
Commissioner Sekan?
Yes.
And as stated previously, uh, Commissioner Singh is absent. Vice Chair, uh, Corey?
Here.
And then Chairman Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez, will you lead us in the flag salute? Yes.
Flag of the United States of America. Public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Okay. Uh, potential conflicts of interest, any commissioner who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify that item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Okay, uh, at this time, any member of the public may address the commission regarding any item over which the commission has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item, not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the chairperson for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Now remember, this is a special presentation, so we are going to listen to staff first, and then we'll open it up for full public comment.
I'd like to add, as a reminder to the callers on the line, please use star nine to raise your virtual hand and star six to unmute yourself. For the callers using Zoom, please use your, the raise your hand feature. Thank you.
We do have one.
Okay, I need a commission, a commissioner to move to accept the meetings as written. The minutes.
Uh, one, one second, chairman, we do have a caller on the line. We do have a caller on the line, one second.
Do I, do I speak now?
Yeah, Mr. Nelson, your line is open, you have three minutes.
My name is Dwight Nelson, I'm a builder, developer, businessman in the city of Selma for the past sixty years. For the past year and a half, I've been asking the city manager to be placed on the city planning commission agenda, so I could discuss items of great importance to the city, and have been assured that that would take place. And as you can see, it has not taken place, because I'm not there live in front of you with an agenda item to discuss. And I'm asking, what do I have to do to get placed on your agenda for the next planning commission meeting? Were you able to hear me?
Yes, we could hear you. Thank you.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
If the commission would like, uh, me to provide a response, I can.
Um, I think that should be directed at staff. We don't make the agendas, um, we just follow them as they're provided to us. So you will probably want to get in contact with the planning department here at the city of Selma, and keep trying as they are very busy right now, so just keep working on it, and we'll hopefully get your agenda item placed on before one of these meetings.
And if I may, Chairman Garcia, uh, Mr. Nelson, I, I can give you a call tomorrow to discuss the specific items that you'd like to place on the next planning agenda for June.
What, what is the date of the next planning commission meeting?
The date, it would be the fourth Monday of June, so it looks like June twenty-eighth.
I will be out of town that, that day. So then July?
July twenty-sixth would be the, the following meeting, yes.
That would be good, okay.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, I have your contact info, and I can reach out tomorrow, we can discuss those items.
Can, can any, can anyone tell me why it is that Teresa or Kira, your planner, never would communicate with us to honor that request that I've been making for a year now? Does anybody know?
I'm sorry, Mr. Nelson, I, I could not speak to that.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. See you in July.
Is there any other public comment?
Uh, at the moment, no, but as a reminder to the callers on the line, please use star nine to raise your hand, your virtual hand, and star six to unmute yourself. For the callers using Zoom, please use a raise your hand feature. Chairman, there are no callers at this time.
Okay, we'll close it to, uh, public comment at this time. Uh, and let's go ahead and move on to, uh, agenda item number two. Uh, staff, what do you have for us there? Oh, wait a second, yes, I'm sorry, I need to approve the minutes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting.
I motion to approve.
A second.
Second.
A second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Minutes are approved as written. Now we're going to move on to agenda.
Excuse me, excuse me, chairman, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Uh, yes, um, let's see. Commissioner Sandu?
Lupe, will you take, will you be taking the role, or did you want Chairman Garcia?
Yeah, I apologize, yeah, I'll take the role.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Wadis?
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu?
Aye.
Commissioner Sekan?
Aye.
Vice Chair, Curry?
Aye.
And Chairman Garcia?
Aye. Okay, now let's move on to agenda item number two.
If I may, uh, Chairman Garcia, um, the special presentation, I think, was skipped before the consent calendar. Okay, I'll find it. And I would be more than happy to introduce that.
Uh, introduction to Community Development Director Fernando Santillan, Building Planning Technician Lupe Macias, and Legal Counsel, League, Council Wesley, uh, Carlson.
Thank you, Chairman Garcia, and members of the planning commission. Um, we'll, we'll keep this brief, because we do have, uh, some pressing business on the agenda, but uh, we wanted to, we as staff wanted to take this opportunity to introduce ourselves. We do have two new staff members, and, uh, actually, three staff members, uh, four now, actually, with Anna Lisa here in the room. And just wanted to, uh, you know, tell you a little bit about ourselves, and, uh, so you could see us face to face as well, I think that's the benefit of, of having the, the commissioners here in person. And, uh, I'll start off with myself, and then I'll, I'll introduce Lupe as well, and I'll give, uh, Wes, uh, an opportunity, our city attorney, to introduce himself as well. Uh, speaking for myself, uh, I've been with the city of Selma for the last three months since February, and it's a, a pleasure and an honor to be serving the community of Selma. Uh, for the last six years, I was in the city of Avanale as the Community and Economic Development Director. Avanale is in Kings County. Uh, my background is, um, I'm a certified planner, uh, economic development is, is how I started in, in local government, and um, so, you know, I, I'm here in Selma, and I grew up in Fresno, um, and I'm very happy to be, like I said, serving the community of Selma, so thank you for having me. And, uh, Lupe Macias is also in the room. Um, he joined, uh, the Community Development Department from the Finance Department, uh, prior to me coming on board, um, and he's been, he has been a wonderful asset. Oh, I think Reyna wanted us to stand in front of the camera, so the community could see us. Um, but Lupe has been a wonderful asset. Sorry, our city clerk is making us stand in front of the camera, so the community can, can get to know us, but this is Lupe Macias, um, our building and planning, planning tech in the Community Development Department. Uh, and he helps us aside from the planning commission meetings, uh, takes walk-ins, um, applications for building permits, he issues special events permits, and the myriad of different, uh, applications that we receive, uh, on a daily basis, so great to have you on board, Lupe, thank you very much for, for all your help. Wes, did you want to say a few words?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Wes Carlson. I am an attorney with the law firm Lozano Smith. The city council recently selected Lozano Smith to serve as the city of Selma's city attorney. And I am one of the members of the team that the firm has, uh, to provide legal services for the city. I work with a number of planning and development departments and planning commissions for other local communities. Uh, I have been working with Fernando and other members of staff here in Selma since the transition occurred several weeks ago. And I look forward to working with you commissioners. Uh, my role here is to provide legal advice, and if questions arise, legal issues, procedures, what have you, can, uh, feel free to, you know, like, flag me down, ask me questions that might be, uh, necessary to you serving your role. That's what I'm here for. So again, nice to make acquaintances with everybody, and I look forward to working with the commission.
Anna Lisa, go for it.
I'm Anna Lisa Perre, I'm going to be sitting in as contract city planner tonight. Um, I am with a company called Quadna, or QK for short, and we've been providing on-call city planning services to the city. Um, I am a contract city planner in a number of other cities here in the valley. And I also specialize in policy and environmental planning.
That concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now for number two, public hearings, consideration and necessary action of a resolution recommending the approval of an amendment to Title Six, Section Twenty of the Selma Municipal Code, granting authority to Community Service Director to approve the possession and consumption, consumption of alcoholic beverages on the grounds of Pioneer Village, or any structure therein. Is there anyone here to speak on that matter? Staff report, thank you.
You may, if I may, um, give a, a background from the staff report. So this, this item came about, um, our Community Services Director, Michael Kirchner, who was, I believe, is on the line to answer any questions that may arise, but currently, our municipal code, uh, does not align with our current practice at Pioneer Village, which is to, for private parties and events to allow, um, alcoholic beverage consumption, um, upon approval by the Community Services Director. Um, and so this, this is an effort to essentially align our current, um, practice with um, our ordinance, uh, so that, you know, we are not, uh, by issuing the, those permits to allow alcoholic beverage consumption for concerts and, and private parties, things like that, we are not in violation of our own law, so this was something that was approved last week by the Pioneer Village Commission unanimously, and now we are bringing it forward, uh, to the planning commission for a recommendation of approval to the city council. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, uh, just to get this correct, all we're doing is realigning our code with past practices.
That's correct, and it, uh, the draft ordinance essentially adds language, um, that, that says that any, that the Community Services Director by application, um, can grant that, uh, that, uh, author, or that permission to, to folks who apply, uh, through our normal, to, through our existing, um, rental process at Pioneer Village. Um, and the Chief of Police would have also a say, uh, in that process, which is currently the case of how it's being, uh, handled.
I just have one question, please, or concern. When we do grant, uh, permit for a certain family or group to do an event at Pioneer Village, do we shut down the historic buildings?
That's a good question, I think I would defer to our Community Services Director, Michael Kirchner, for that question. Michael, are you on the line?
Yeah, uh, good, good evening. Basically, what you do is you, we have a five-hour maximum, they can serve alcohol, and they have to stop consumption and serve you an hour before their event's over. And it's only the outdoor part of the, uh, Pioneer Village. Unless they have a special request to use a building, we would have a, a volunteer staff member also monitor the building. But alcohol's not permitted in the building anyway, it's only allowed on the grounds.
Okay, yeah, that was my concern, I just want to make sure if things, you know, when people are drinking and having fun, that we're not jeopardizing the historic buildings.
No, not at all.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone here to speak on the above item?
As a reminder to the callers on the line, please use star nine to raise your hand, your virtual hand, and star six to unmute yourself. For the callers using Zoom, please use the raise hand feature.
Chairman Garcia, if you may open the, um, public hearing to take comment from the public, I think that would be the, the appropriate step, is that correct, Wes?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you just want to say, uh, that we are now opening the public hearing.
We're now opening the public hearing uh, for agenda item number two, Municipal Code Amendment Title Six, Chapter Twenty.
Chairman, at this time, there are no callers on the line.
Okay. Is there anybody who wishes to speak against the above agenda item?
Chairman, Chairman Garcia, there are no callers on the line wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, then, um, I would, uh, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing portion of this agenda item, and give it back to the commissioners for discussion.
Buddy has any questions, comments?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'd like somebody to make a motion to vote to approve or not approve the above agenda item.
I'll go ahead and motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, may I take role?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadis? I'm sorry, Commissioner, I missed it.
Yes.
Commissioner Sandu?
Yes.
Commissioner Sekan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Curry?
Yes.
And Chairman Garcia?
Yes. Motion passed. Second item tonight for public hearing would be, uh, the consideration and necessary action on application number two zero two one dash zero 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 two filed by Lennar Homes, considering of a resolution to make findings and recommended approval of annexation of ninety-four point five-three acres into the city and pre-zoning as RM SP dash AMB, and consideration of a resolution to recommend approval of vesting tentative subdivision map track six-two-four-four, and the accompanied notice of exemption to allow for two-hundred-and-seventy residential lots and two parks on a fifty-one-point-one acre site located in the northeast corner of East Floral Avenue and Dockery Avenue. At this, uh, at this time, I'd like to get the staff report on this project.
Thank you, Chairman Garcia. Um, this item, uh, is with regard to the Amberwood, uh, specific plan, and specifically, the first phase of that project. Uh, the, the applicant, uh, Lennar Homes, um, is proposing to build two-hundred-and-seventy homes uh, at the northeast corner of Dockery and Floral Avenue. Um, currently, that property is not within the Selma city limits, so, uh, part of the application is to annex a total of about ninety-four acres into the city limits, um, which will include enough sufficient, uh, land for the first phase, as well as a future phase of, of the, um, uh, specific planned project. Uh, we, uh, the, the builder, Lennar Homes, uh, plans to build various, uh, models and, and floor plans, um, and, uh, will include a two-acre, approximately two-acre park, um, in the, in the middle of the development. Uh, the, uh, most, the pre-zone, um, conforms, uh, to the general plan, and it's, um, the densities, um, of this first phase are about, uh, five dwelling units per acre, if I'm not mistaken. And by the way, Anna Lisa, our planner, will be, uh, giving a PowerPoint to the public, um, after I, I give my overview of the, of the staff report. Um, and, uh, this is something that has been in the works really since it's about two thousand and five. The revised specific plan was adopted in two thousand and fifteen, um, by the Planning Commission and the City Council at that time, and so this is the, the first phase of that, um, of making that specific plan, um, a reality. Uh, we have, staff has found that the, um, project, that the first phase, uh, comply, complies with the subdivision map act. Um, and we are, staff is recommending approval, but at this time, I'll turn it over to Anna Lisa for her presentation on the project.
Having me tonight, I'm Anna Lisa Perre, I'm a contract city planner with QK. For the commission tonight is considering asked by the applicant, Lennar Homes. In addition to that, we do have before you a vesting tentative subdivision. Um, this is about fifty-five acres, and that is of Dockery and Floral Avenue. Um, in addition to that, we do have a day, uh, to meet CEQA guidelines. So the proposed project is located along the eastern city limit at the northeast corner of Floral and Dockery Avenues, um, as indicated on the map on the left, on the left-hand side. Um, and then I did include the map on the right-hand side as well, just to give you a little bit of context as to where Phase One is in the grand scheme of, uh, the, um, approved Amberwood specific plan, as Fernando mentioned, which was approved, uh, back in twenty fifteen. So in regards to the annexation and pre-zoning, um, the approximate ninety-four acres to be annexed and pre-zoned is shown here within the red boundary. Um, the proposed pre-zoning would be RM SP AMB, which is medium-density residential within the Amberwood specific plan. This zone is intended to provide for neighborhoods consisting of detached, single-family residences with a density of up to nine dwelling units. And then before the commission, um, is the proposed track six-two-four-four, this is the vesting tentative subdivision map. Um, this, this map consists of two-hundred-and-seventy lots and two outlots. The proposed lots shown here, as mentioned, are consistent with the Amberwood specific plan, um, for lot sizes and densities. For the commission now is the conceptual landscape plan. Um, this is where you start to see the two outlots, which we do have the two-acre park in the middle of the subdivision. And then we do have a point-one-one acre park, which is, um, described as Outlet B on the tentative subdivision map, and you see that towards the western edge of the project site. On to additional renderings. Um, these are proposed conceptual renderings of the two-acre park. And the, this land will be annexed into, well, both outlots will be annexed into an LLMD, which is a Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District. Um, and it will be the responsibility of the city for ongoing, uh, maintenance of these two outlots of the two parks. So moving on to the lot plan and three home types. Um, there are three home types that are proposed for track sixty-two forty-four, as indicated on the map before us. Um, information for each one of these three plans, e- each one of the three floor, floor home plans, excuse me, um, were included in the staff report, so we won't go into each one of those individually, but if any of you have any questions about that, we can, we can definitely spend a little bit more time talking about those. Um, but the required development standards for each lot, so that would include setbacks, lot area, lot dimensions are established in the Amberwood, um, specific plan, and any future, uh, development would have to conform with the setback requirements and other development standards for. And move on to circulation. Um, and I'm going to do my best to explain the proposed improvements, but I know our city engineer is on the line too, and he can definitely jump in if I miss something. Um, I'll, I'll work our way through, and I think you can see house. Um, I'll just go through and talk about some of the improvements. The first one is going to be Floral Avenue at East Street. Are proposing to re-stripe the westbound left through right lane to separate left and a shared through right. Um, down here, if you follow my mouse to the bottom picture, um, at Floral Avenue, at, at Dockery Avenue, we are proposing for the developer to re-stripe the eastbound left through right lane to separate left and a shared through right. It can straight from the traffic study, and I think it sounds like it, too. And then down here below, we have Floral Avenue, um, Floral Avenue between Dockery Ave and East Street. Proposed improvements include, um, the re-stripe of a two-lane to a four-lane. Actually, these two pictures, if you can tell, this one ends, it picks up over here. And at Floral Avenue, at Orange Avenue, um, the developer will be required to re-stripe the eastbound left through right lane um, to a shared left through and a shared through right lane as well. Um, as far as utilities go, um, for domestic water, uh, domestic water will be provided by California Water Service Company via water main lines located in Floral Avenue, which the proposed project will be required to connect to. Um, for wastewater, wastewater would be collected in a community-wide sanitary sewer system. And then for storm drainage, uh, storm drainage would drain initially into a community-wide sanitary sewer system. sanitary sewer system, but eventually at full build-out, the storm drain water within the Amberwood specific plan area will be collected and detained on-site through the storm drainage system. For sewage, the SKF sewage treatment plant will be utilized for treatment and disposal, and then we did include a map here. It shows is the sewer line pipe, the sewer pipeline extends from Golden State here, and then it extends all the way up to Delray and Floral. And then from this point on, the developer would be required to build out the rest of line, of the line from this location to project site. Then in conformance with CEQA guidelines, section one-five-one-eight of CEQA guidelines states that where a public agency has prepared an EIR on a specific plan after January one nineteen eighty, residential project undertaken pursuant to and in conformity to that specific plan is exempt from CEQA. So for this project, the proposed annexation, pre-zone, vest, vesting tentative subdivision map are consistent with the specific plan. It was reviewed under the approved EIR and found to be consistent with no additional environmental analysis required. Findings for approval, we did include those in the staff report, and staff was not planning to go through each and every one of those, but if there were any specific questions as it pertains to any of the findings, we definitely can go back and answer any questions. But I'll just say that staff was able to make the required findings, and therefore it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council to approve application number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-two for the proposed annexation, pre-zone, and vesting tentative map, which is track sixty-sixty-two forty, along with the findings, conditions of approval, and notice of exemption. So with that, staff would be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you. We have any questions?
I have a question, but it may be directed towards the engineer. In doing the traffic studies, was there any consideration taken for possibly adding traffic lights specifically at the corner of Dockery and Floral or Orange and Floral?
Good afternoon, councilmember, I'm Brandon Gisard, your interim city engineer right now. Yes, it was, there was traffic warrants that were done on actually six different intersections, which I, I can gladly share those studies with you guys, but they, they don't even come close yet to meeting the warrant required to install a traffic signal.
Okay, because that, the corner, especially at that would be Floral and I believe it's Orange, gets pretty congested, especially when the junior high school and Roosevelt Elementary School are dismissing kids. Traffic can be backed up pretty, pretty far on those, yeah, and you believe as the traffic engineer that the re-stripping of the lanes will be enough to alleviate that kind of traffic buildup?
Yeah, so it was, it was an independent traffic impact study that was prepared by Ruth Davis, traffic, because she specializes in that, and we review it in coordination with, with what she proposed, but what we do is we analyze the level of service that each intersection had, the queue lengths basically is what determines it, how long you're sitting there waiting. So through that, we identify making these modifications, it will get the level of service to what is the adopted acceptable level per the municipal code.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Hey, so, did you have a question, John?
Just about the, the storm drain. Storm drains is going to be taken care of through the S, the SKS for the sewer at first, until it's completely built out?
For storm drainage, we have that it'll drain initially into the city's existing sewer system, or I'm sorry, storm drain system.
Storm drain system.
And then at, at full build-out, it will be detained on-site.
I thought I had heard sewer system.
I could have misspoken, yeah, I apologize.
Yeah, in the, in the Amberwood specific plan, if you can go back a couple of slides where it shows the Amberwood specific plan, it will, it drains down Floral Avenue, and there will be a basin. You can kind of see it, so on the bottom right-hand corner there, you see those two green areas go down a little bit more into the right? Yeah, so those are actually the, the basins that are planned for handling all Amberwood specific plan. There's a storm drain master plan study being prepared right now. Lennar Homes will connect their system going down Floral Avenue and, and basically dig the first phase of the basin that will accommodate their system, but as Amberwood all develops out, it'll drain down here in that whole storm drain master, is being master planned.
Thank you.
I have one question. For engineering. The question is, like, we have any future planning, because all the traffic is going to be like ninety-nine and floral, basically it's going to get more congested over there. Is there's any future plan, anything to deal with that, or it's going to be like the way it is?
There, there's a couple things in place, so Kittleson had did original traffic impact study for this entire Amberwood specific plan, so we're making sure as the development happens, we're doing an additional traffic impact study to see how each phase then interacts with the city and what congestions it's creating. All of these houses will be paying, paying into the citywide traffic impact fee that has identified the deficiencies to be able to go ahead and correct those, and also Caltrans, this was routed to Caltrans, and they made their comment on what is especially floral and Highland area, what, basically they're paying their fair share dollars to Caltrans to help then at some point be able to do the interchange.
Hey, with no further questions from the Planning Commission, I'm going to open this up to oral communications. Notice to the public, at this time, any member of the public may address the commission regarding any item over which the commission has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item, not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the chairperson for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. That's the boilerplate one, but I believe we're extending it a little bit. Where we will take these three-minute commission, these three-minute communications for roughly thirty to forty-five minutes, and then at that point, we will, we reserve the right to be able to shorten that. What we don't want to avoid is repeats, the same arguments going over and over again. Instead, what we'd like to hear is anything that would be new or a different reason or a different argument. So at this time, we go ahead and open up the floor for public communication.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify your announcement that this, that announcement pertains to the public hearing that you have now opened for this proposal, agenda item number three, as opposed to general public comment, which was of the generic notice that you initially began reading from.
Thank you, thank you. So we do have a three-minute time limit on this.
We'll have a representative of the applicant on the line, if you, if it was your pleasure to give that gentleman an opportunity, his name is Ara Kellarissian, and I believe he has his hands raised.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Ara Kellarissian. I'm pleased to speak on behalf of this project, which is being proposed by Lennar Homes. Staff mentioned, this project consists of two hundred and seventy home sites and offers three different Lennar product lines. This is the first project that's within the Amberwood specific plan area and represents an important milestone for the overall specific plan. Amberwood, as you know, is a master plan community that includes a wide range of housing types, parks, and other amenities. I'd like to share a couple of unique project highlights. This project includes a two-acre neighborhood public park that is intended to serve both the residents of Amberwood, but also the greater, greater Selma community. Park is, would be similar in nature to the Ringo Park or the Salazar Park. Amenities could include shade structures, play areas, basketball court, and picnic areas. Per the Amberwood specific plan, the north side of Floral along the project boundary would be built out, as described by staff, and the project will also have gateway monument entry signs, all of which are included in your packet. Thank you, I thank you all for your consideration of this project this evening, ask approval of the project, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have related to the project, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this project? Hey, I'd like to open it up at this time for anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the project?
Upe, do we have any callers with their hand raised who would like to speak?
I apologize, I do have, we do have a caller on the line. Caller, please, as a reminder, please state your name.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Kelly Jones. I live at one-three-zero-zero Floral Avenue. My house is the old Grindel Home, which is on the northwest corner of Floral and Dockery, and I apologize, I didn't get in on the meeting early enough, so I missed all the beginning parts of this, so if I'm saying something out of turn, just let me know. I'm concerned with the size of homes, infrastructure as far as water, sewer, all of that kind of stuff, schools. Right now, our street, which is the corner of Floral and Dockery, a Dockery is a dead-end street, so from what I could see from a map that I was able to get eyes on, looks like you have an entrance and exit off of Dockery, and then one off of Floral and one off of Dinuba. How are you going to accommodate all of the traffic that will be going down all of these streets that are on the perimeter of your homes that are going to be built? And what size square footage are we looking at? I think that's it.
Did you want us to respond to that, Chairman Garcia?
Yes, please, I'm sorry. Yes, whoever.
Thank you for your comments. And with regard to the lot sizes, they range anywhere from about, just under four thousand square feet up to just over thirteen thousand square feet, so it'll be a good mix throughout the two hundred and seventy lots. With regard to your comments about the traffic particularly impacting Dockery Avenue, you know, we have heard some concerns about the level of traffic from that additional access point into the development, and, you know, the developer is on the line, Representative Lennar, and I think that they might be open to working with the community to find out, you know, some compromises to, to that particular issue. I think one of the things, one of the reasons, and I don't have all the history on it, but I think one of the reasons that that entrance into the development was incorporated on the west side of the project was for an additional fire access point, and it provides an additional route for the children who are attending Abraham Lincoln Middle School. So, but that's, that is something that, that's still potentially under consideration in terms of potential options, you know, as well as, as some of the improvements to Dockery to alleviate some of the traffic impacts, but thank you for your comments.
So are you saying that the how, homes were going to be four thousand square feet along Dockery, or I, I'm not understanding?
I, yeah, I apologize, I didn't specify, but looking at the tentative map here, along Dockery, south of Street B, it looks like the range is from about forty-two hundred to about four thousand square feet.
That's the lot size.
In terms of the lot size, I'm sorry, thank you for clarifying.
Well, I'm asking about the size of the house, so if the lot size is going to be, you said forty-two hundred square feet, or is that what you're saying? So how, how big are these houses going to be then?
So on, on that side of the property, I think there was a slide in the presentation that sort of highlighted which collection was going to be built on that side, I don't have that, the actual floor plans or the elevations that are going to be built on that, those specific lots. I don't know if Mr. Erissian has that information that he'd be willing to provide, but I would defer to him.
What I, what I saw, again, the map that I saw, it looked like there were going to be a thousand-square-foot homes going down Dockery, starting from Floral going, what would that be, going north on Dockery, Floral down Dockery. And, you know, my house is right on the corner, and my house is a thirty-four hundred-square-foot home. That's going to severely impact, you know, our ability to sell our home at any time that we choose. I don't think any of the homes in that area in those cul-de-sacs that run along that side there are small homes to begin with, and most of the folks that live over there are on the older side. So then now you're also talking about not only increasing traffic up and down that street, but you're also talking about kids going back and forth from, from the junior high. The amount of traffic that's going to go down that street to get to that school is going to significantly increase. Floral is going to have to be widened to accommodate all the traffic that's going to go to that new subdivision. Are you planning on taking out people's property lines?
No, there is no additional right-of-way, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, there's no additional right-of-way planned for Floral. One of the ways that Floral was going to be improved was to remove some of the on-street parking to add an additional lane. Again, that's a proposed improvement based on the traffic impact study, but there may be other potential options, but there will not, we won't be, or the developer will not be acquiring additional right-of-way, from my understanding.
How about water and sewer?
Are you asking where those lines are actually going to go in?
Well, yeah, I mean, how is that going to impact the city of some, and in particular our end of town? From what I understand from one of my neighbors, he says every time it rains, it's not only floods our street, but then it also backs up the sewer line. So, I mean, so far, our house isn't impacted with the sewer, but we are greatly impacted with the water problem.
Sure, one of the elements of, of this first phase is significant additions to our sewer infrastructure, going down from around Golden State and Saginaw area and running a trunk line up to Floral and Delray, and then a, a main line that connects to that trunk line from the development, so there will, will absolutely be new infrastructure that's put in to support the, the project.
Okay, and then lastly, how about schools? Since there hasn't been any new school built since, what, the junior high?
Yes, I, I think further phases of, of the specific plan do call for, for a new school, and I'm sorry, I don't have the information as to what level of school that would be, but there are some plans in the specific plan for that in later phases, depending on how it develops.
How, how far along are we in this process? What are we looking at timewise, timeline-wise?
I don't have a specific timeline, I, I will tell you that this process will also include a public hearing at the City Council, so this will not be the, the only opportunity that you have to, to speak on this matter.
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate you answering my questions. Thank you again to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you for calling.
Our planner Anna-Lisa has some more information about the square footage of the specific homes along Our planner Anna Lisa has some more information about the square footage of the specific homes along Dockery.
Yeah, so it looks like the homes along Dockery are going to be the Clementine um, models, which looking at the plans, it looks like the Clement, Clementine models. About fifteen hundred square feet.
Um, I had a quick question. Um, we found uh, floor plans for the Coronet series and for the Clementine. Um, the floor plans for the California series, are they included in our packets? Are they the ones that are the same size as the site plans and that are in our packets?
Sorry, I had my mic on. Uh, Arecel, do you have any information on, on those floor plans and any additional info that you can provide?
Yeah, the um, specifically on the Clementine series, uh, it go, uh, the, the, th- those are the sheets with the green border on the left. Um, and those floor plans are from fourteen sixty to uh, twenty-nine eighty-five, and there possibly may be one larger, I'm not sure. Um, the California series are the ones that look more like an architectural set of drawings that just precede that in your packet. Um, on the right-hand side, right in the middle, it says uh, California series. And so those are representative of, of those packets.
I have a question for you, please. Are you going to limit the number of homes of each square footage? So for example, if you have a hundred customers asking for the fourteen hundred square feet versus the twenty-nine hundred square feet, are you pre-assigning floor plans to certain lots and a limit for each square footage?
You know, I'm not sure uh, on the, the sales policies of that. Um, we could certainly find out. I know we have a couple of um, Lenar uh, Homes members also in the attendees list. Uh, perhaps they uh, know kind of the procedures on sales and and might be able to answer that question.
I would appreciate it because most homeowners' concerns are they don't want to see two hundred and seventy homes turn into fourteen hundred square foot, all of them, which eventually people upgrade, those turn into rentals, and that brings down the value of the whole development. So the concern is, are we going to have a decent balance between larger homes and smaller homes to preserve some sort of homeownership and pride of ownership in our community?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to try to get that answer in terms of what the actual uh, sales uh, process is for that. I know just in reviewing the three, three series of plans, um, there, there is a wide range and that is the intent. Um, I'm just got a message here. Uh, typically, uh, the, the procedure is to pre-plot the homes uh, in advance of sales uh, and and to shoot for uh, relatively even distribution. So that is the typical approach uh, uh, in terms of the square footage of homes.
Okay, thank you.
And uh, could we get clarification on which series of homes are going to be running along Floral? Um, the colors are really close together and I'm having a little trouble discerning. Is it the California or the Coronet? The California? Okay, so those are the ones that we have underneath and I.
Chairman Garcia, if I may interrupt, I do apologize. Um, I can definitely, um, my recommendation right now is uh, to continue taking the public hearing comments from the public and ask our consultants and/or our um, Mr. Arizian to answer those questions at the end of the public comment period. Would that be okay with?
Yes, that's fine.
Perfect, okay. Lupa, do we have any other callers on the line?
Yes, we do have a caller. Uh, as a reminder to the callers on the line, please use star nine to raise your virtual hand and star six to unmute yourself. For the callers using Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And we do have caller Mr. Allen on the line.
Good evening. Bob Allen, thirteen fifteen Maple. Uh, we're one of the older members of the community that live on Dockery. Um, off on a cul-de-sac, the last one, Maple. This is not the first time that this project has been before some of those of us who have lived there for some time. And the last project, which is included in the uh, your actual Amber specific plan, shows Dockery and the two blocks there uh, from Floral Avenue over on Dockery. Um, uh, the plan that was originally uh, agreed to when they did a public workshop with us, and there was no uh, entrance onto Dockery or out to Orange Avenue. Uh, we have a concern as residents with the uh, the traffic impact that that will make on our residents. Uh, the, the mitigation efforts need, we feel have not been done at this point when last time this project was before uh, any of the governmental bodies of the city. Uh, they did meet with us for a public uh, workshop, got our input and actually resolved those for us, which was very helpful. Uh, we're not, uh, Lenar Homes are great homes. I, my daughter and son-in-law both lived in one in Eldorado Hills. Uh, that's not the issue. The issue is the impact of the traffic will have on Dockery Avenue and even on Orange Avenue as it goes out. So if you look at the, the actual specific plan document, there is no street that goes from the inside of that development of Amberwood out to Orange Avenue. It was just added uh, at this particular time uh, uh, for, for our consideration. So our concern is uh, we, we would like to see the opportunity for us to get together and meet with the developers on this project, see if this couldn't be uh, uh, mitigated before it goes to the city council or even for the planning commission to make a decision. So um, uh, we're, we're not anti-development. We just are very concerned about the impact of two hundred and seventy homes on our one block uh, of street on Dockery between the middle school and Floral Avenue. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any other callers?
Uh, Chairman, we have no other callers on the line. I want to turn over to committee development director Santian to read uh, written comments.
Uh, members of the planning commission, we did uh, receive a comment from a gentleman, Gary Ford, uh, earlier today prior to the commencement of the meeting. Um, and his concerns were, were with regard to uh, the traffic impact on Floral as well. Um, apparently there was an accident in nineteen ninety-four on Dockery and Olive in, in the vicinity of this project. Um, and he, his concerns also included um, the uh, number of smaller lots that, that were going to be, that were planned to be constructed. Um, and because his recollection was that originally the, the specific plan proposed um, larger, larger lots. Um, and I did share with him um, that this is a, the first phase and, and, and the full build-out of the specific plan um, would include a lot more of the larger lots that were originally planned. There is a specific density um, that was, that's required by the specific plan and, and, and future phases will, will have to adhere to the overall density to um, to be in conformity with that plan. Thank you.
Are we going to address Mr. Allen's concern or question about the Dockery, Orange Avenue access?
Arecel, did you want to uh, speak on the traffic impacts in Dockery?
Sure. Um, yeah, we, we've, we've been working with city staff, uh, engineering uh, on the access points and, and it was determined that that access point was uh, needed um, and was requested to be added uh, from the city, um, connecting out to Orange. Uh, and this is important for public response times, police, fire. Uh, and um, as staff has mentioned, the connections uh, uh, out to the middle school. Um, the, there, we, in our conversation with staff regarding Dockery, uh, it currently is a dead-end street. Um, if it is uh, the desire of city staff or the planning commission to, to leave it as such, um, we would still be able to proceed so long as we have that connection out to Dockery, uh, which is critical for the circulation of the map. Um, and so we would uh, we would work with, with staff uh, and at the request of the planning commission uh, to make those adjustments. Uh, but we, we do believe that the three points of access are needed and important for the project itself. But we would be able to do that by leaving Dockery uh, as it is today, which is a, currently a, a dead-end street.
So there will be no access from Dockery to Street B, which is the street that leads to Orange. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that, that's what we discussed uh, with staff uh, last week, um, when we started to get some comments. And I think that would work in terms of uh, from, from Lenar's point of view. We would just default to uh, staff uh, recommendation, engineering, police, fire um, and planning. If, if they, if they are uh, okay with that, then that would work in terms of uh, the subdivision from our perspective.
The Orange Avenue access seems to be pretty critical, especially when it comes to safety, police and fire. So um, if Lenar and the homeowners that live on Betty Lane and Maple Street and Dockery can work out an agreement where that could take place, I think that would be a fine solution to that problem.
Yeah, I think uh, per- perhaps uh, a, a city engineer can comment on this, but we were just talking about um, you know, uh, having that area just be landscaped and there would be no vehicular connection. And you know, on our side of the fence or whatever, it would, it would be landscaped and would be walkable and, and safe in that regard. So I'm not sure. I, I think that's what we had talked about with city staff uh, and engineering as to how we could make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arizian.
Um, we're working with the homeowners and Lenar to kind of finalize this issue, doing that is done or?
Um, as far as, as procedurally, um, and our city attorney can direct me, I, I think the planning commission can still make the recommendation to approve with the uh, condition or caveat that we work with the homeowners and the builder to determine uh, the best solution for that concern. Um, and that, that could, the solution, the proposal that was presented just now uh, could very well be um, you know, the, the solution that we end up agreeing to.
That sounds good.
Are there any further public comments?
Uh, Chairman, we have no more public comment.
Okay, I'd like to close the uh, oral communications part of this um, agenda item. If um, commissioners, are there any questions from you regarding this project?
I pretty much asked mine, so.
Great. Terrific. I need a uh.
So ba- basically, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the project. I think, uh, you know, I, I know there's a few issues. They can be worked out. But uh, you know, we need a housing in Selma really bad and we need to grow. And I think we need a lot of homes over here, and I'm, I'm in favor of this project. I know there's some issues. We need to work on that, some access points and that kind of stuff. But eventually, um, you know, we need housing. We are always going to have a issue when we, we expand, we build new housing, and we, we need to just work on it. Uh, that's, that's my take on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Secon. Uh, I guess we need a motion.
So I will make a motion to recommend approval to city council with uh, two reservations, I guess. The first one would be to work with the homeowners on Maple and on Dockery on a solution for the access uh, from Dockery to Floral or B Street. And the second one, hopefully preserving our homeownership aspect in that community, not building all fourteen hundred square foot homes where it turns into a rental community for the sake of everyone that's living around it. So I'm not sure how else to word, to word that.
Sure. Um, Mr. Arizian uh, speaking on behalf of Lenar to commit to having a variety of uh, home floor plan options um, based on the range that's presented in the specific plan. Is that, is that sort of what you were?
Yeah, that, that's the information I received. I, I think um, what you suggested was uh, appropriate where we would um, be able to address both of those issues prior to city council. Uh, and so I'll work with staff to um, uh, confirm and get the detail on how that works uh, and, and work on both of those issues prior to city council. And then we'll come to city council with the uh, full and complete response.
Thank you.
We're willing to do that.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, uh, before a vote is taken. Uh, just for clarity of the record, uh, I think we should read back what that motion is. And also for my clarity, is that motion including approving the resolutions uh, that are part of the agenda packet?
Yes, basically annexing the ninety acres with a tentative map, track number sixty-two forty-four, recommending approval to city council on both items with the two considerations that I mentioned.
Madam Clerk, is that clear enough for you?
Thank you. That's uh, what I just stepped in here for. So as I hear it, we're going to revise the resolution, and I think the specific resolution that we need to revise, would that be specific to the vesting tentative subdivision map? So not specific to the annexation. I'm thinking that the concerns that are being brought up are specific to, not to pre-zoning, not to the pre-zoning resolution. But I think this all falls under the vesting tentative subdivision map resolution.
Correct.
That is correct.
So we're going to, so there's a motion on the floor and there's a second to approve with the revisions as suggested to the resolution approving the vesting tentative subdivision map. And everything else is uh, approved as.
As is.
As it.
Do we have the numbers for those resolutions?
Since we have not yet had a planning commission, those numbers are going to be twenty-twenty-one, one, twenty-twenty-one, two. And I think with our three resolutions.
Well, there was a resolution.
Well, I guess the one for finding a village first.
So that was number one. Here, the annexation and pre-zone resolution will be number two and subdivision map will be number three.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion and a second? Um, can I ask Lupa to take roll call now? With the approval of Chairman? And I'm sorry, I did not get who made the second.
Um, Mr. Gonzalez.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Commissioner Gonzalez made the second.
All right, Chairman, if I may take roll. Uh, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wattis? Commissioner Sandu?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Secon?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Curry?
Yes.
And Chairman Garcia?
Yes. Okay. Uh, notices to the public, at this time, any member of the public may address the commission regarding any item over which the commission has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will refer to the chairperson for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes.
As a reminder to callers on the line. As a reminder to callers on the line, please use star nine to raise your virtual hand and star six to mute yourself. For the callers using Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. Chairman Garcia, there are no other callers on the line.
Okay, uh, just a reminder that any, any writings or documents provided to a majority of the Southern Plan Commission regarding any items on this agenda will be made available for public inspection at City Clerk's office located at seventeen ten Tucker Street during normal business hires, hours in compliance with the ADA. If you need special assistance to participate in any senior meeting, including assisted listening devices, please contact, talk to the City Clerk's office at five-five-nine-eight-nine-one-two-two-zero-zero. Uh, notification of at least forty-eight hours to the meeting will assist staff in assuring that reasonable arrangements can be made provided for this meeting. Uh, can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
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 We are adjourned at seven-seventeen.
Thank you.